Okay, I'll call to order our recess budget work session from which day was it, Amber? Yeah, from, uh, June 20th, 2023. First thing on our agenda, of course, will be our invocation, Keith, you want to do that?
Sure. Let's just have any father thank you for giving us a safe trip here, watch over, guide us, help us with this budget and other decisions that we have to make, watch over and guide us and give us a safe trip home, in Jesus' name we pray.
To the pledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, I think the only other thing we have on the budget is our general discussion and finalizing the budget today so they can do a budget ordinance. Amber, you have anything to, you or at least have anything to add before we start talking about it? Okay. Okay, um, I'll start for just a second here and then we'll go from there. I've communicated with the commissioners over the weekend with a proposal that changes some of my thoughts from our last budget meeting. We can use that as a basis for the discussion, or we could do it some other way if the board prefers. If we don't use it as a starting point, I'll read it so that everybody will, is that good? Okay, I said, I'll read it out loud so for the benefit of the public and the folks that are watching us online. Commissioners and Amber, I've been thinking more about the budget and after further reflection have changed my previous position on a few areas. The first one is the tax increases. It's my opinion now that raising the property tax four cents does not reduce risk or improve our financial position enough to justify it this year, even though a tax increase will likely be needed soon and probably next year. Also campaigned on raising taxes only as a last resort, and I don't think we've reached that last resort point, though we're kind of getting close to it. I've also changed my position on raising the fire tax two cents this year. I would like to go through the fire commission process, and if recommended by the commission next year, I would definitely support it then. Based on the appeals we heard, the only fire increase I would like to do is increase Westfield's amount to ensure we are paying our fair share and treating them fairly, given the supplemental funds that our other departments receive from the legislature. I've also modified my position on the detention officers. I checked with Amber and the jail revenues have declined during the past three years, though they are still making the loan payments with excess funds remaining. Instead of approving four detention officers, I would prefer to just do two now. This would give us an opportunity to measure the results for a year before committing a substantial amount of funds for four positions. My last concern and major problem with the budget is the school system's current expense fund balance. I think it's ridiculous to have them up to, have a, up to 2.8 million fund balance when we are dying on the vine with our fund balance and looking at tax increases. I would ask the board to reconsider its earlier position and reduce Amber's current expense recommendation by $800,000, which will still leave the Board of Education approximately $2 million in their fund balance. They can always come back to us in case of a dire emergency, and we need these funds in our general fund this year. Then I ask Amber, she'd please give us a revised version of the budget with these changes in it. The only other thing I said, I did recommend or suggest that we look at maybe $50,000 for Westfield. I would defer to Brad's opinion on that. That's just a, that's the number that we received from our senator in the legislature for the other fire departments. So that's my position as of today. And who wants to speak first? Brad, you want to speak?
Sure. First of all, um, it's, you know, I respect everyone's opinion. I, uh, what I, what I basically ran on was, you know, a business friendly environment, open and responsive government, and quality of life issues. Since fiscal year 17 and 18, we continue that the previous boards have every single year taken money from the reserve fund to balance the budget. And it gets, it gets to the point to where it's, we always, and I can't, I mean, I can't get into the head or the minds of what the previous boards thought, but it seems from the outside looking in is that we just want to get past this fiscal year. And whatever fiscal year we're in, it just seems like, let's just balance the budget, you know, do the bare minimum, take money out of the savings account, and, and just move on. And for instance, the budget year that we're in right now, when you think about this, to me, it's, it's stunning when you think about this. So the current budget year that we were in, they took, the Board of Commissioners took over $3 million out of the fund balance for this year to balance the budget. And also, we got 8.8 million ARPA funds. 8.8 million dollars. What? You know that's not coming back around again, and they still took money out of the, out of our savings account, our fund balance, to do that. I, I mean, I, I understand this is not a, this is not an easy task. We are, we are spending some money to, to update our almost non-existent outdated IT, and it's not, has nothing to do with the people that work in IT. It has everything to do with the people that have controlled the money to where the funding should have gone. It's every single year we kick the can down the road, we get unfunded mandates that we have to do. We listen, we listen to our fire departments. You know, we have a problem here in Stokes County, and it's not just here, it's all over the state with volunteer fire departments, but we live in Stokes County, so I'm gonna, I'll keep it narrow to Stokes County, is during the week, during the day, if you're involved in a wreck and you need a rescue operation, or your house is on fire, or your barn is on fire, we have a hard time getting enough people on a truck, even out of one station, to go. And it's, it's, and it's, and it's been that way, and it continues to, to grow. Last week, we heard from our, our volunteer fire chiefs. And then we hear too, that, you know, the full-time department in King, you know, they're going farther and farther and farther out to help meet the minimum standards to where we, where we can actually run a truck. But again, we'll, you know, we'll set it aside and, and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll do the, the best that, that we can, and, and the, the one good thing about our, our volunteer fire departments is they'll, they'll make it work the best that they can. But eventually, um, in about four years, as we continue to kick, kick the can down the road, we'll be bankrupt, we'll be under the 8%, and then, uh, we'll have the local government commission, they'll come in, and then we won't need to be up here going over budget matters because they'll set the tax rate, and then, and then we'll, we'll do what they say. That's all I got.
Who's next? I'm getting into volunteer.
Sure, I'll go.
Go ahead.
I'll go. Working on the budget is probably one of our most important duties as a county commissioner. And at this point in the United States of America, in North Carolina, in Stokes County, the majority of our citizens are experiencing the word inflation, possibly recession. But when I go out to Food Lion or any of the stores all over the county trees, when I go out, if I get a sandwich for lunch and I go into the restaurants, people come up to me because they know I'm a commissioner. And I ask them how things are going, and the majority of the people say, we're just getting by. We're just getting by. You know, it's, it's not their fault that eggs went from $2 or $3 a dozen to $5 or $6 a dozen. It wasn't their fault that when President Trump left office that gas was $1.87 a gallon, and I just filled it up over the weekend, and it was between $3.50 and $4 a gallon. It's not the citizens of Stokes County's fault that the administration, the federal administration has passed down all of these executive orders that are affecting them on a daily basis. And I don't, I, I did not run this time, so I cannot say what each of the other three commissioners campaigned on. I, I did not, I was not up for reelection. But I know each time I have never, I personally, and it's just me, I've never campaigned on raising taxes, never. And I, and I'm not going to campaign on that. When a person tells me, I hope I can make my house payment and not get evicted this month, or I hope I've got enough money left out of my check to go to the grocery store and get my three children something to eat so they won't have to go hungry this month. And I stand by that. Each person has their own opinion, but I know that there are many, many citizens hurting in Stokes County right now, and they do increase taxes on a year where we are being hammered with inflation. And it's not their fault. I could never go along with that. When we made the first goal-setting, uh, meeting, I said that I would not vote for a tax increase. I have stayed steady with that, and I will not back off of that. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Minnethal, Son, if you're ready.
Yeah, sure. While just listening to Commissioner Chandler and Minnethal, are there things that I agree with that they both have said? I think that there is going to come a day of reckoning, and it's just, it's soon, that we're gonna have to, you know, to deal with, with this situation that's, that has been not dealt with in nine years, but, um, you know, I agree with what Mr. Minnethal's saying about the recession right now. I was talking to a lady that I do her hair, and she's a senior citizen that lives in a senior citizen housing that's supposed to be for low income, and she said when she moved in there four years ago, she only had to pay $450 a month rent, and it was so reasonable. And she moved from Davidson County or several counties away because it was the most reasonable place she could find to rent. So she had to move from where she lived, where she knew everybody, up to King, where she didn't know anybody. But she said just in like four years, it's went from $4.25 to $850, it's doubled her rent. And so, um, there's a lot of people in that situation that are struggling, and what happens with a property tax increase is, what I hate about it is it's such an unfair tax because it only goes to the property owners. The renters, however, are affected because if a property owner owns a property and their taxes go up, they pass that right on to the renter. They just go up to cover the amount, so it does affect people who rent as well, but, you know, I don't, the, the sales tax is the only fair way to, to spread it to everybody, and then a half a cent is just not going to do much to help our prob, a quarter cent, I mean, it's not gonna, maybe we need to do a half. But we're gonna do it. But it is such more of a fair tax because it's, it's spread out to everybody who, who purchases things, but, um, to Brad's point about the ARPA money and taking out the, um, the $3 million, but looking at the sheet, uh, we, what was appropriated back to the fund balance per the audit, so, uh, was 2.745, so only $500,000 was actually used that year. We appropriated it, but we didn't need it, and it's probably because of that ARPA money that we were able to only have to use 500 and, and reappropriate back 2.7, so, and it was 3.2. So that, that was a, a year that, that we came out pretty good, but it was probably because of that, that ARPA money. But, but yeah, there is a pattern of, um, having to use that fund balance, and, um, and while I think that's probably the case with most, most counties, um, we can't put, we can't keep digging ourselves in this hole where we drop to 12%, 8%. I mean, it's just too dangerous. So I think we're gonna have to pay the piper at some point. However, I, I agree with Ronnie, I don't think this is the year to, to have to do that, but I, I am in favor of, of, of doing a fire tax increase. That's a tax I could live with increasing right now, and I said that at the last meeting, that that's, that's a safety thing, and everybody, you know, that, that, that is something that when you need, the fire department, you need them to, to be able to be there and respond quickly, and, and with the dwindling amount of, of volunteers, I think that's something that I could agree, agree to if, if this year or next year is, is the fire tax. But, um, I, as far as what all of, um, the recommendation, the updated recommendation from Chairman Morris, um, I would say the going to two detention officers, we could live with that. I know that the revenues were down some because of COVID, um, and, um, Chief Deputy's here if he might speak to that, but I know during COVID, they couldn't house as many inmates, uh, so I'm sure the revenue was down then, but, but at least two there, and I'm not in favor of reducing the schools' current expense any further, so that's all I have right now.
About the Westfield thing, you have a thought?
Um, I think we should make it right with them, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to help them.
So your no tax increase, uh, two detention officers, good with the Westfield, not good with the school?
Yes, yes, in a nutshell.
Okay, Keith, what's your thought?
Well, I think I mentioned this to you on the phone call. I want to thank you for sending that out, because I slept real good this weekend, because I, I couldn't do the tax thing. But with that said, people of Stokes County, y'all need to wake up, it's coming. 10, 12 years, no tax increase, that's, that, that's not even common sense, because everything costs more. Everything, salaries, insurance, and, and to get the services from the fire department, the sheriff's department, we have no choice, so it's coming. So start putting it back, that's all I can tell you, because, uh, and I know common sense ain't around no more, but I'm old school. But, uh, this has been a learning experience for me, and we've got our work cut out for us, and I hate the word mandate. I have learned that in this session. I don't like being told what to do. That's all I got, just get on.
Well, I don't like to be told what to do without any money to, to help me do that.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out on a limb, and they can, they can call me if they want to, but these, these 19 schools, that is a sore point with me, that is hurting us too over the years. That should have been resolved 10 years ago. And we're still playing with it. All right, I'm shutting up before I say something I shouldn't.
You want to have a, own position on all the things I recommended, or you want to do that later?
I'm good for all of it.
All of them?
Rock and roll.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, sure.
I forgot to mention this, and then, Commissioner Minnethal said something, it's in my memory. So you know that, that we did have a tax increase this year, because we had the reevaluation. What the, what the trick was, is it didn't, when we did the reevaluation, they didn't, they considered revenue neutral, but they never came off the actual tax rate. So our tax rate stayed the same, and that's what everybody honed in on, that we haven't changed the tax rate in nine straight years. But last year, Commissioner Minnethal, and I don't know if Commissioner Morris did, I think Commissioner Cox did, voted for to keep the property value as was. In other words, they didn't lower the tax rate to make it revenue neutral. So your property taxes went up last year. So yes, it's, it's a trick of the words about we don't re, we don't raise the tax rate, but when I get my tax bill and my tax rate goes up, I had a tax increase. But I'm just open about it and honest about it. Instead of saying I'm never going to run on, campaign to raise taxes, well, you raised taxes last year. That's all I got to say.
I was gonna mention the revow too, so I just forgot.
You want to mention it now?
Well, just as, that, my comment about the revow was just, in essence, yes, there was a tax increase. That's how a lot of people do view the revow, so.
The mountain went up.
So they, yes, yes, so that's correct.
And last time, um, not, um, looking at that really hard in the 2025.
Right.
About going to revenue neutral or somewhere besides staying the same. You gotta remember that.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
We campaigned on it, so go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Chandler is accurate that we did have a reevaluation which increased property taxes, but what we have there is, uh, the word mandate was mentioned. We don't have a choice on doing reevaluations of property. Our tax administrator, Mr. Brown, has made it clear that the state of North Carolina mandates every three to five years that we have a re-evaluation. And he has said that in many meetings I've sat in, so it's not like there was, there's an option. He couldn't call Governor Cooper and say, yes, it's Richard Brim from Stokes County, but I'm sorry, we're not doing a reevaluation.
That's, you finish.
And, and, uh, at that situation, then, the commissioners had to sit back and wait for that, and we're gonna have another reevaluation coming up. And it's not, you know, it's not something that we can just say, sorry, but we're not going to do it, it's coming. But I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, I'd like to clarify something too. So according to general statute, the Board of Commissioners on a reevaluation year, you have, have to discuss and also have the option of going revenue neutral, in other words, dropping your tax rate anywhere from, you know, how many cents you want to do it, but you, you, you have to do that, and so the board does. So if, if the board didn't want to raise taxes, then they could have went revenue neutral. So it's not, it's not due to the fact that Richard Brim can't call Governor Cooper and say he's not going to do a tax, uh, reevaluation. It is a statute that we have to do it, but it's also a statute that allows for us not to have to raise taxes. My whole point is, we raise taxes, and it just, it's a, it's a game of words, and instead of just saying, hey, we gotta raise taxes and move on, we play these reflection games.
Yeah, the statute requires you to publish that rate, that revenue neutral rate, so the public will, really the purpose of it is to tell them for getting a tax increase, unless you do put it down revenue neutral. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Brad, you want to talk about the things I recommended, what you, would you start actually with the Westfield thing and see?
Yeah, I, I support, I support $50,000 for, for Westfield Fire, um, mainly because of the, of the way that, um, the funds were distributed, and they did appeal, uh, the fire commission budget, they did appeal that, but I do think that, that they deserve that $50,000. Detention officers, um, I, I mean, I saw the, the figures, so I, I would agree with that, to do two, and then we look as the year goes on, and if the, the revenue actually, you know, matches the four, then I say we do a budget amendment and give them the four detention officers.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And then, um, what else do we have? School budget, um, originally I was against pulling at $800,000, but since we're not doing a, since we're not doing a, uh, property tax increase, I, we got it, we got, I can't risk going any lower in the deserved fund, in the, the fund balance, so I, I'm for that.
Okay. Is that everything? That's all the areas, right? One thing, I was talking to Amber earlier about this $50,000 when I suggested it, about how we do that, because the, uh, if the board wants, wanted to do it, and the, uh, the, the grants that came from Joyce, our senator, had restrictions, right? I mean, kind of her guidance or something, it was a grant. And so we need to, first of all, make sure they realize it's a non-recurring amount, this only this year. And secondly, uh, we got to, we probably should decide if we want it to have the same restrictions as what Joyce is, uh, did or what, and I don't have a strong opinion on that.
What were those restrictions? Does anybody recall?
I understand that each of the fire departments had to submit, um, basically what they were going to do with that $50,000, and they had to provide the scope of work and the reporting, how they were going to show the performance measures, and then the state had to approve, approve the, that expense for it. So I didn't know if y'all wanted to have that same kind of setup and make them, like, do the, kind of like, report every three months, like the other fire departments are going to have to do, or?
And report to us?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
If we give it to them?
That's up to y'all, um, because that, that is the restriction of the grant, because everything that they're doing now with that $50,000, um, they had to get it approved by the state, and that we do have to report on that every three months, I believe it is.
And we're handling that as a reimbursement grant. They have to provide proof that they paid, they get a council check, then we turn around and cut them a check back.
What if we, uh? What if we, uh, let me just suggest this, and then you guys decide if you wanna do it or not. What if we just approve an amount today, and then make it an agenda item maybe for our next meeting? Talk about how we wanna administer it. Is that okay with that works there, buddy?
Do you just want that to come from the general fund?
I think, well, could it, where else could it come from? Our tax.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's an option. I mean, you have the fire commission set up to recommend stuff such as that, but...
You need to know today for the budget ordinance, don't you?
Yes, yeah, we have to know where the revenues are coming from in order to put that in there.
Say general fund.
General fund, yeah, that's fine. Hey, Commissioner Minnethall, it's your turn again. Just wanna make a comment on each one of those four items. We already did on tax increase.
I did, and I am good, I think, with the, um, fifty thousand for Westfield. I think that's the fair thing to do on that one. Um, so... And...
Detention officers, you got?
I, I think your, your recommendation in your text was, instead of four, to go with two and see how it goes this year.
Yeah.
Can, I can do that.
Okay. And I think it'll go well, and we'll end up doing four eventually, but...
I can go with that.
I, can I ask a question about that topic? What's the art of filling those positions?
I'm good right now, the deep gets us a lot of deep, I, I use the deep regularly in the other social media outlets.
That's great, because I hear horror stories of the counties, so...
We're only down, uh, two positions and, and working on application for one of those positions right now.
Good. That's all.
Okay. So you're on taxes, detention, Westfield, and schools, uh, on the other one?
Um... Two point eight million is a very healthy, um, fund balance for the school system. Would have probably run up and down Danbury's Main Street if I'd have had two point eight million when I was superintendent.
What was your, what was your balancing if you were there?
We took fifty and five hundred, I think.
Yeah, we never, yeah. So that's why I say, uh, don't get me wrong. I mean, Commissioner Cox noticed that I love education. It was my lifeline for all my life. Like I say, I, I never dreamed when I was in there, about five years, almost five years, of a two point eight million dollar, and I would have been thrilled with two million. So I, I'm just gonna have to say I can go with the two million.
Okay. All right, so, um, do we, do you guys wanna have a vote on each one of them? Or do we, can we already just do a consensus on them?
Um, um, my point on the school...
Those four points, okay.
I think we're pretty much in agreement on about everything except that.
Okay.
School thing, from what I can tell. Um, and my point in the school thing, in my, the, the way I think about their, their request and, and what they came up here and talked to us about, if we do fund them at the level Amber's recommending, that's a two million dollar cut that they're gonna have to make from their budget. So that would only leave them about eight hundred thousand dollars if they choose to, um, depending on if they make cuts or allocate fund balance, which we don't know, they have that, they could do either one, and some of both. They may take and try to cut, you know, they may take one point five million of their fund balance and put in and, and cut another five or eight hundred thousand somewhere, and that'll be programs or positions. But I feel like, looking at what Amber's recommendation is and what, if we did that, they've still gotta find two million dollars to, to cut, or, or either to allocate their fund balance, which if they did, would leave them about eight hundred. So that's just how I look at it, and I know everybody kind of use it differently. Um, it wouldn't, in the final study of everything, it ain't gonna keep me from voting for the budget in the grand scheme of things, that one item. I'm just stating my, my position on it. Because I, I agree with Keith, uh, on what he said about the sore point about nineteen schools. I'm disappointed that there's not a recommendation on the, from them of a plan at this point to have something in mind that we're gonna look to, to do. I mean, I, I'm really hopeful that, that when they get this next study in, that that's coming. I, I, it's gonna have to happen. Consolidation is gonna have to happen. And I think, um, more or less, the, the parents and the students are not the problem. A lot of it is employees and communities. And a lot of times, it's communities that have that hold on, you know, think losing that school's gonna, it's the hub of, of the community. And I get that, but what's best for students and, um, well, is consolidation. And what's best for education and what makes sense financially is consolidation. And so they're gonna have to do, you know, make some tough decisions. And I wish they were, we, we had that in front of us right now because it would help us deciding this budget stuff with them. But being on, being, have been there on the other side of that for fifteen years, I could, I, I know they, they, if we cut another eight hundred thousand, they, they got, uh, they'll, they'll cut peo- they'll have to make some cuts with people. And that would be easier if there weren't as many schools. So, so...
I'm not sure they will, to be honest with you, but we'll see.
Well, you never know, like you say.
The other thing is, I put in my thing is, you know, they do have the option to come back to us. I know they don't like to do that.
Yeah.
And I, I can understand where they're coming from. But if we're not gonna raise taxes and we got a low, a fund balance as unhealthy as ours is, you know, I just, I just can't see...
I get that too, I get it.
I can't see passing that eight hundred more down there.
I get what you're saying.
For them to keep it.
I, I understand.
So are we kinda all in agreement then on all these items? I mean, not agreement, but...
I don't like taking eight hundred more thousand from them, but I'm, I feel like I'm gonna be outvoted on that, so...
High probability.
She agrees, but she disagrees.
Well, I mean, I, like I said, uh, the final budget is, to me, a different, you know, I, I don't wanna feel like I'm not supporting the county in the budget by that one item, but I'm just voicing my opinion that I, that I think it's gonna be detrimental to them to take another eight hundred thousand.
But you don't need a formal vote on it?
I don't think so, I mean, I think I may be the only outlier on that.
Consensus.
They got a recording.
Okay, um, so that's those four items for you guys. Do, um, do the commissioners have other areas, uh, beyond what we've talked about just now that you wanna look at before we finalize this and tell them to go get the budget ordinance done?
I feel like, um, do we have an idea of what the fund balance would be if we do the things that Commissioner, um, Morris suggested?
Yeah, outside, outside of the, outside of the fifty thousand for Westfield, because we weren't sure where y'all wanted to take that from, so we didn't put that in the figures just yet, but we will by the time we give y'all that budget ordinance. Um, it looks like it'll be about eleven point five percent.
With the fifty, it brings it down to eleven point three seven.
Can you take that fifty thousand out of last year's general fund? Just asking because that other money went to those other fire departments last year.
We still, we still have those funds sitting there until they, until we reimburse them, but that's up to...
And you may just do a budget amendment of this year's budget for it?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, not even pulling this up, next upcoming year's.
Yeah, I think we could. Y'all think about that if it, if...
And it's not put in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
If you come up with some reason we can't do it, then we'll just assort, just make the adjustments.
Go do that real quick.
I was gonna say, can you do that between that and the two o'clock meeting?
Yeah, yes, yeah. As long as Lisa has the time to go back and do that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there any other, any other issues? Are, are we pretty much in agreement on everything else now?
Yeah, we'll have a, my understanding is we'll have a draft budget ordinance by the time y'all leave today. Um, I know there's a few last things that finances wrapping up on it. Um, and so Lisa will probably stay for the budget amendments portion of the two o'clock meeting and probably go back over there and work on it, just so she can have it to y'all by the time that y'all leave today.
Okay, so if we, uh, so we have a consensus of this today, would you, Amber, would you like for us to, at tomorrow's meeting, have two votes? One approving the budget, one approving the budget ordinance?
Yeah, I think that'd be fun.
We do both, that way you got time to finalize it.
And I can, and I can write up what the, what the amount's gonna be and what that tax rate change will be for the school current expense with that removal of eight hundred thousand and everything.
It will, it will change that a little bit, that...
Because it will change, like, it won't be thirty-one to thirty-one, how it's been in the past couple of years.
Okay.
It'll change it just a little bit.
Okay, so I guess, uh, any other business on the budget that we need to talk about tomorrow's meeting? I suggest we have a hybrid meeting tomorrow where you can come here, or you can call in.
Because I wanna be out too.
You're, okay, that's good.
Got green kids.
So what time do we wanna have that hybrid meeting tomorrow to approve all of this?
Well, probably come here, so anytime.
You're open all day?
I'm open all day.
Y'all, how much, when would y'all like to have it, later in the afternoon or...
At least give us a little time in the morning, um, so later morning or, or early afternoon, whatever works.
Yeah.
Uh, you'll be on the church.
Yeah, our church, going out to him for a trip to Lisa's farm ranch, too, maybe.
Two o'clock in the afternoon, that, that works.
We'll have the altar step out of the way.
Okay, that works.
We'll be in here tomorrow, but we'll just move them back.
Okay, so we'll convene the meeting here at two o'clock and then...
You're just gonna recess today's meeting, right? You're just gonna recess today's meeting?
Yeah, recess today's meeting. And, um, do it at two o'clock tomorrow here, and anyone that wants to can call in instead of coming. Is that good? So do you guys have any further questions for us before you go finalize all this? That you need answered?
Um, okay. I think we're clear. And, and I just wanted to make sure, one point about the two detention officers, that also came with the increase in pay grade to the deputies as well. Okay, because that's how we had done it, because they said, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's...
I just wanna make sure that was clarified too.
That's good.
Because we, all the current ones, we had to raise up to that level as well, so...
Everybody's good on that, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Doing the motion to recess until tomorrow at two P M.
Make a motion that we recess.
I was wanting to close session with, um, just to... I know that. Why they're here now. Well, I mean, we've got time, if we could do it, is there any way to do it now?
A close meeting?
A close.
I think we need our attorney here.
That's what I was just saying.
We need our attorney in that close session.
Yeah, we don't have it on the agenda either.
Okay.
So I'll, I'm gonna still make the motion that we recess this meeting until two o'clock tomorrow.